Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, July, or, excuse me, I wish, January 7, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started this evening, and we'll start by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Kylie. Councilmember Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
All right. Is Reverend Nathan Esser here from First Presbyterian? He is. Good. I was getting, come on up here, young man. You can come up right up behind there. We'll ask you to give the invocation tonight. We appreciate you being here. So why don't you all rise for that?
Yeah.
And, um...
Thank you.
Come right over here. There's a mic.
Where I was supposed to be.
No problem.
Stand right here.
Thanks for being here, man.
Thank you.
Reverend Esser will give the invocation, and then we will say the Pledge of Allegiance right after. So, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm honored to be here and appear before this body. As I was walking out the door, my wife said, "You know, it's the start of the new year." And you always listen to your wife.
Always.
I try. And it's been a hard year. There's been some challenges for the city, and just to acknowledge that and to thank you for what you do in helping our city continue to grow and care for one another, and also mindful of what's happening around the world. And although we're not facing a disaster right now, there's much around the world that weighs heavy upon us, and to be mindful of that, and to not underestimate our role and what we can do, each one of us, and even more so as a community, to support one another, to care for one another, to see one another, and just how much we can do, that is good. And so if you'd bow your heads, I'd like to pray. Holy God, we thank you for this new day. We thank you for opportunities, opportunities individually and corporately, especially as this council meets this evening. We pray your blessing upon the city of Sioux Falls. We pray for our mayor, for our council members. Be with them and help guide them in their decisions this evening. Protect our city service members, the Sioux Falls Police Department, men and women serving our city, the Sioux Falls firefighters, our schools, our teachers, our students, and especially the citizens of the city of Sioux Falls. We pray not only for your protection, but also for your direction for all those you have placed in positions of responsibility and leadership within this great city. And we ask your blessing once again as we meet this evening, and we pray all these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Reverend Esser, for leading us in that. We'll get on with the business for the evening and start with item four, which is our consent agenda. Look for changes or motions to that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion to approve that by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Is there any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our regular agenda, item 35, and look for a motion on that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Councilor Erickson and seconded by Councilor Kylie. Any discussion, council? Okay, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're at our general public input portion of our agenda for this evening. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in our agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. And for all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item that we're considering at that time only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward for general public input. And clerk, please note, our time right now is 7:06. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, just earlier...
State your name, Brett.
Uh, Brett Cruz.
Thanks, Brett.
Um, earlier today, I was going home. I turned on, uh, Cleveland, and, uh, I was going toward Sixth Street, and, uh, there was a bus standing right there with his lights on. And, uh, I mean, I stopped, and there were a whole bunch of cars behind the bus stopped. And then this one guy just spun by, whatever, and I was just saying, "We're the cops. No one, you need them," or whatever. And, yeah. Because if I do that, I'd probably get pulled over, or someone would call in and report me or whatever. Yeah. Um, I don't know. I was just gonna say, yeah, that's about it.
Thanks, Brett. Good to see you, man.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening?
Greetings. Can you fix the overhead? There we go. Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and I'm here to talk tonight about storm water management. Kind of like what happens when you get too much rain. Waterways, some people think of them as a beautiful thing of nature. Others think that we need to dominate and control and pollute them. So, two different ways to look at water. Global warming, it's here, it's now, it's making for more extreme weather. The city's pretty well set for a 100-year flood, but I think we should be looking at the possibility of a 500-year flood and get ready for one of those. City building standards, you might think that we are neutral with regard to rain, but actually, we're promoting flooding because of statistic number two there on the overhead. Channelization, not good. Makes for worse flooding downstream. It's something that we should try to avoid. Here's an example of channelization. It's by Benson Road. There's not much life left in that stream. Levees, they're good for keeping water back, but sometimes they promote the risk of flooding in case the darn things fail. Our city is set for about a 100-year flood with levees. There's the Big Sioux River, protected by levees, channelized highly by the airports. Check out this floodplain map. Oh, sorry. Building into floodplains is generally a bad idea. It's awfully risky. When things fail, people want a government bailout. Not real good for us. Check out this floodplain map of western Sioux Falls. If our levees fail, we're going to be in a world of hurt, because that's a lot of territory that's going to be flooded. Here's an example of a flood, 41st and Louise. Maybe we should try to prevent that from recurring. Another example of a roadway flood, again, we can change how often these occur if we're careful. Some risky construction, building by a floodplain is a bad idea. All right, so how do we fix all of this? Reducing channelization's a good idea. Don't build on a floodplain. Okay, next, please. Water permeable pavement, we need to get a lot of this in town. It's going to make a big difference. Rooftop detention ponds, I think that's a great way to save a little bit of flooding, and we should all try to enjoy our very wet, watery city. Good evening.
Thank you, David. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, I'm way too short for that. So, hi, I'm Bridget Myers. I am from the Oscar Howe Valley View neighborhood. And the reason I'm here tonight is, we had a project that had been passed, actually, I think it was even maybe last year now. We're still waiting to kind of get finalized with what's going on, but what we have found out from the city, we've been working with planning and zoning and getting information about the project, but one of the things that we've been told is that they are going to be allowed to bring in fill for that development. One of the positions of why we fought the project is we were worried about the shade for our backyards. Most of our houses on that street, all our windows are on the south side of our homes. I have expensive landscaping in my backyard that's full sun. Well, now we're being told that they can bring in fill, and the ground zero will be from whatever the graded land is. So if they bring in 15 feet of fill, it's going to be a 77-foot building, which was a total contention of what happened with our project. So in my opinion, it should be moved back to 77 feet if they bring in 15 feet of fill, because 60 feet was determined because that was the top of the building. I have some concerns about it. We were misled on many things with this project, and I want it repealed. I want to know if there's a process to repeal the process, because information that was presented to you was not accurate information. We do not have a say at building permits for anything more with this project. You were our only hope to protect our neighborhood. I listened last week, or the last council meeting, where you guys are working on the Galaxy Drive development. That was our former piano teacher that lived out there. Saying that water studies are too expensive is really hurtful to the citizens that live in those areas. Could we have the city and the developers split the cost for a water study when it's been 20 years since you've done a water study in an area? I think that's a really good solution, rather than building detention ponds as the only solution, because that seems to be, as long as they build a detention pond, we push it through. Detention ponds are not all the solutions that we need for development, and I really want the process changed of how you guys are taking citizens through it, because we showed up and we had no voice. No one spoke for us on the council, but one individual. What was presented that day with the shade pictures gave a very, very false hope of what we're actually dealing with. I have concerns, because my councilperson was giving a presentation for a developer. And I have concerns that nobody in your position should be taking a stand for a developer when you're supposed to remain unbiased. And I think a lot of you maybe need to take a gut check at where you're taking donations from and who you're siding with for some of these things, because we are all watching, and we know what's going on. And many meetings were done behind closed doors before this development was brought to my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Josh Kaiser. I'm from Sioux Falls. This is, I've had a four-wheel-drive truck in the past. This year has put me to use the four-wheel drive. I've never had to use it before. It's been pathetic on your guys' behalf on getting the snow removal done. Last night, I was over at a friend's house that the mayor knows, Mr. Ken Sprouls. I was going up Wayland Court from 30th. I tried twice getting up it. There is about six inches of ice on it. I went up the second time, got to the lip, slid back down, and took out the stop sign that never used to be there. And now I got $122 ticket for sliding over one of your stop signs. And no one's done nothing about getting ice, melt, or sand, or whatever out there. I'm going to appeal that ticket on the 21st, and hopefully you guys can have something done with the snow and ice on that road. And then going back to the weekend of Thanksgiving, the weekend after, that snow that we got. I had pulled multiple cars in my truck on 10th and Cliff, because they were getting stuck, no plows, for approximately two hours. I was there from 10:00 to 8:00 till about 10:30 that night on a Saturday, dragging cars up because they were getting stuck, because no plows, no sanders, nothing. So is there a way you guys can get them out before it completely covers the road and get ice on them hills? So, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Here, Bruce, start Sioux Falls. Now you, no. East Sixth Street, we're going to talk about. It's still an investigation, but I'm going to bring it to light more and more. And I want arrests made in this investigation. There is leads. This was an arson with a slumlord. We had issues in that, on that property there. The police department failed to do their job. They just talked to the chief before he left here. When the police drive by and they see graffiti on the property, they are to stop, call for backup, and report that crime. It was not reported. Code enforcement was not informed by emails of people living in a condemned property. I called the fire department to see the four signs of how to determine a fire, and he told me how they did it to come to undetermined. So then the lab results come back, and they said it was an arson. And when the fire was happening, I called the police department, and I called Dean Langdon up and said, "I told you all so that there was going to be a blow up. They were going to set it on fire." And that's what happened. When it comes down to Weeder Neighborhood, I have to keep on the police. I don't give a darn who says what. I have to push these issues. I'm having people call my phone on issues. I called the police and said, "Didn't they just call you 30 minutes prior to this explosion? What happened? Why wasn't nobody called? Why wasn't code enforcement called?" When a house is condemned, they don't supposed to be having any gas running through it. No electricity, no water, and sure, not trash service. These people's been living in this house for months, in a condemned house. I'm going to follow the police department. We're not taking initiative. The police department is the biggest gang. They can get the gangs off the streets in that neighborhood. They can get those drugs off this street in their neighborhood. And I told the detective, and I'm giving him a couple weeks, and I'm going to come out with who did it. He has leads. They need to stop saying that Weeder Neighborhood is okay, that we don't have no crime in Weeder Neighborhood. It's filled with crime in Weeder Neighborhood. I got off the phone with the sergeant last night, because my blood was bolling. And I thought, y'all failed. Why didn't nobody report graffiti on the house, call code enforcement, or email? We don't do that. In Sierra, we just really don't have the time to be calling in on every graffiti. I want a report on how much it costs for this arson to happen. How much did it cost the taxpayers dollars, because this could have been prevented from these gang members that are living a block away. I want the public to be aware, because they were ringing my phones. They wasn't ringing the mayor's office. They were ringing my phones when the explosion happened. They want answers. So the police department needs to give them their answers before this investigation's over.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bruce Danielson. I, uh... I have, uh, I published an article this weekend on SouthDakota.com talking about the search engine that is being, uh, that we have right now on the city clerk's website. And overall, the entire city website should be redone, so it's user-friendly. But I did have a nice conversation today with Tom Greco, the city clerk, and now I understand a little more about how they do this. I've been programming of different sorts for 40 years, and I can't, I've always had to do my website designs, my search engines, all these things. So that is, the first thing that's important is how it's going to be used. I want to be able to take a second grader and say, type cat in there and get an answer. You know, Google is that way. We want to be able to have very straightforward answers, and when we put a question in there, we get a result. I want to thank Tom for taking the time with me today. We've talked about working together so that we can actually get decent results without having to go through this area here that says "Search Tips and Instructions," which most people don't understand. And I have gotten so many calls the last few weeks looking for data, and it's been extremely frustrating to everybody, because if you're lucky, you'll get this kind of a result. I was looking for Teresa Staley's campaign finance reports. I was just curious about something, and this is all I got. Well, we have to find a better way to bring all of this together. And, but, that doesn't tell me anything. A score 100 doesn't tell me anything, and a score 29 doesn't tell me anything. When I look at all of your reports that I've been trying to find, a lot of these I can't even find yet, because some of you have handwritten the reports. I believe that all of the campaign finance reports should be done in a searchable PDF. The document should be so that you have to type it out, or find somebody who can type out your document and put it in, not do handwritten ones anymore. Building searchable type of fillable PDF forms are the way to go with things. And I want to thank again Tom for taking the time with me, and I hope we can get this thing so it's actually user-friendly for the people, so I don't have six more calls in the next few days. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this evening for public input? All right, clerk, next item, please.
Item 37 is a new 2020 retail wine license for Best Western Glose Sioux Falls 1211 South Darrow Place. CUP not required.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. This particular applicant submitted an application for a beer license back in November and was approved. They have since decided they want to allow to sell all types of wines, other than what's just allowed with their other license, so.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counsel, do you have any questions for Jamie on it? Get a motion on it?
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion approved by Selberg and seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? We'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 38 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East 69th Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban District, number 1130282019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Signature Companies. It's located north of East 69th Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue. It's about 14.14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a townhome residential development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions on this one for Jason?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 39?
Item 39 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 2012 East Russell Street from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional Districts, number 113372019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero.
The applicant here is Tyler Aaron. The owner is Affordable Housing Solutions. It's located at 2012 East Russell Street. It's about .10 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a new single-family house on the lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, do you have questions for Jason on this one?
Move to approve.
All right.
Second, Sale.
Second. Motion approved by Councilor Kylie and seconded by Sale. Discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 40 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1221 West 85th Street from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and REC Recreational Districts, number 114282019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero.
The applicant here is Jesse Deffenbaugh. The owner is Lake Alvin LLC. This is located on 85th Street, just west of the new Walmart. It's roughly 2.35 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a single-family residential development with roughly four lots.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, questions for Jason on this? Move approval?
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion approved by Councilor Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, council? We will vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're on to item 41.
Second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, setting the regular city election date for Tuesday, April 14, 2020, and authorizing a joint election with the Sioux Falls School District, number 495.
Tom, good evening.
Mayor, councilmembers, this sets the date of the city election about 97 days from now, on April 14. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and if required, this ordinance also provides for runoff election, which would be held on May 5. Same polling hours. We will use precincts, and this also authorizes us to combine with the Sioux Falls School District. They made that authorization on their end at the end of this past November. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Come forward.
David Sokitis again. Sometimes it's hard to know when the heck you're supposed to vote. We've got all these different political systems. They all have different time periods and different polling places and different voting places. It's just hard to figure out when the heck you're supposed to vote. So I'm all in favor of the government making life simpler for the voters and combining elections, so. It's all they got.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Erickson.
Just one question, if I can. When does the school district have to let us know? Because it's my understanding they only have one candidate up for reelection, and maybe nobody else runs against that candidate. Do they have a special timeline when they have to tell us?
There is a timeline. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'll certainly send it out. We do have an agreement between us and the school district, but I do know that their timeline is in plenty of time for us to get our ballots done on time either way.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. Any other questions for Tom?
Move to approve Erickson. Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Councilor Brecky. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 42 is a first reading, deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, December 17. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the northwest corner of East Madison Street and North Veterans Parkway from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, LW Live Work, 0O Office, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, LW Live Work, S1 General Institutional, CN Conservation, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and C3 Commercial Community Districts, number 112632019, and amending the...
Counselor Starr.
Just quickly, this is the way is, this is the way it's supposed to work. I can't say it, but this is the way it's supposed to work, where the neighborhood's working with the developer to come up with a, an acceptable solution to everyone involved. So, thank you to the planning staff for really facilitating a lot of neighborhood meetings and a lot of things, and thank you to the developer and as well as the neighbors getting together to do the right thing.
All right. Thanks, Counsel Starr. Any other discussion? All right. We'll take a vote on this motion, a vote on this motion to defer.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Okay. That passes 8 to 0. Item 43.
Item 43 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by repealing the Orpheum Theater Advisory Board of Directors. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, January 14, 2020.
All right. Counselor, are you gonna speak to this?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I've made it three and a half years without using this terminology, but this is truly a cleanup measure. I've never enjoyed that terminology. It usually makes my ears perk up a little bit. But basically what we're doing is we have a board that is no longer useful for the citizens of Sioux Falls and to act in an advisory capacity. The Orpheum Board has dwindled to now three members out of nine, and those three members are going to be offered a position with the Washington Pavilion's Advisory Board. So they're going to continue to contribute and offer their recommendations to the city. So truly, this just cleans it up for a board that we don't intend to use. Director Pritchett this afternoon sent me an email that does confirm that the mayor and the administration is in support of this amendment. The Washington Pavilion Director Smith, or I should say President, I believe, Smith from the Pavilion is also in supportive, supportive of this repeal of this ordinance. So I would take any questions after we have a chance to hear public input.
All right. Is there anyone from the public wanting to speak on this topic? All right, counselors, any, well, let's get a motion, then we'll see if there's any discussion.
I would move to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January 14, 2020.
Second, Staley.
All right. Motion by Starr, seconded by Staley. Any discussion, then, counsel? All right. Let's move to a vote.
Councilmember Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right. That passes 8 to 0. We'll move on to our next item.
Item 44 is first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, authorizing the mayor to sign a conditional gift agreement for donation of real property and approval of the real property being named the Scott Connolly Nature Area. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, January 14, 2020.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Don Kearney with Parks and Recreation. This gifting agreement before you involves the city receiving approximately three acres of property from the Wagner Arboretum Society. This property has been identified in our arboretum master plan for a number of years, and it also happens to be adjacent to the Torberson property that we recently acquired a few weeks ago. The property in question is noted in red on, on the map there, adjacent to the existing Perry Nature Area and the, you can see the development along Highway 42 of the arboretum as we know it today. The conditions on the gift include it being used solely for Parks and Recreation purposes and consistent with the arboretum master plan as we update those from time to time. The property as proposed would be the, named the Scott Connolly Nature Area. Funding for this gift was provided to the society by the Scott and Connolly families, and we could not be more appreciative of their gift. Due to the fact that the promote, proposed name honors living donors, it does require unanimous approval of the Parks and Recreation Board and the city council, and per the naming ordinance that governs this particular transaction. The Parks and Recreation Board, at their meeting last month on December 18, did get unanimous approval for this gifting agreement, and I would also note that this agreement also allows for the installation of a commemorative plaque sign or agreeable recognition for the gift, and anything that would be proposed there, it was subject to city ordinance as well as it relates to plaques and signs and those things. I believe, yeah, Diane Gilder Masters here, the executive director of the Arboretum Society. She unfortunately has lost her voice today, so she did ask me to pass along that they're really excited about this gift and what it will mean for the arboretum and the entire development of the entire area, and for future generations for all the citizens in the area. And with that, we glad, glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thanks a lot, Don. Is there anyone from the public who cares to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Don on this? Counsel Staley?
Don, I received a phone call last night from a citizen who was asking about a founding, an old foundation. Is, do you know, is that on this property?
No, it's actually on the property that was acquired just recently, the Torberson property. I think that's what you're probably referencing.
Is that still the intact?
It is. The foundation's still there.
Will it be protected?
Yeah, that's the idea behind it. There's some, when, when the property finally closes and we have full ownership of that property, there's some cleanup that needs to be done. There's been a lot of dumping that's been thrown in the basement of that foundation, but the idea is to use it as an interpretive opportunity as part of the overall master plan.
And then she was concerned that there was a pathway that was gonna be made into a road that you actually drive on.
There may be walkways, but...
Will they be maintained as walkways, then?
Yeah.
Walking paths?
No intention of having a road through there.
Okay. I'll let her know that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions for Don on this? All right. Look for a motion for a second reading on Tuesday, January 14.
Well moved. Second.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg on that. Any other discussion, counsel? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
All right. That passes 8 to 0. Item 47.
Item 47 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, correcting the legal description of Annexation Resolution Number 8219, Annexation 10706 2019, or cuts addition.